The July 9th, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to orders with all members present. I'm going to ask Melissa Segal to do the invocation today. And I will ask Commissioner Darlene Love to help us in the Pledge of Allegiance today. We'll reverse it a little bit. Thank you. Please stand.
Good evening. I hope everybody had a good Fourth of July. Let's bow our heads and pray. Dear God, we thank you so much for this day that you've given us, and we thank you for this time that we gather. We just pray that you be with the city council as they meet, and that you bless this meeting, and we thank you for your safety, and we thank you for our wonderful police department, and also our fire department, and for this great city of Hawthorne. For its union, we pray. Amen.
Please stand with integrity. I commend allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate that. Councilmember Alex Montero has a presentation on tonight's agenda, "The Road to the 2020 Census."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. As you know, 2020 is coming so fast that the census, you know, actually in March will begin. In the last census, 2010, I was part of a committee that we were trying to count every person in the city of Hawthorne, but we failed because we didn't get to 100% count. I believe we only got about 58%. And you know, you know, the census count is very important because that's the way the federal government sends us money, right? By number of people, that's when they send us money for programs such as the CDBG, home funds, even the schools, you know, for the special ed, for the challenged kids. So it's very important for us to count every people in Hawthorne so we can have 100% count. So therefore, I asked our city attorney, Russell, to come up with a plan to put something on the agenda because the schools district already had a meeting with the county of Los Angeles and the Laco that they're going to come up with a committee that's going to try to put centers into their schools where people can go in the parent centers, use the computers to go online and fill up that census. So I want us to be part of that conversation, and want us to create a committee. So I believe, Mr. Palmer, you have Chris Palmer have some individual from the Census 2020s to... So take it over, please.
Good evening, everyone, City of Hawthorne constituents. My name is Andrew Soto. I am a partnership specialist with the U.S. Census. This is Maricris Threes. She's with me. We're both from the Los Angeles Regional Census Office. Have just a short presentation. I'm sure most of you already know most of this information. Nevertheless, as you stated, it's incredibly important. So why do we do a census? I'm sure many of you are aware. It's in the U.S. Constitution. It's in Article 1, Section 2. Why? As you noted, it's both power and money. It's redistricting. It's... These are the... This is the data that's going to be used to redraw congressional maps, as well as money. It's $675 billion a year distributed throughout the United States every single year. In the binders, we provided you some information. It's per capita about $2,000, according to Georgetown University. So it's tangible, you know, that undercount. This next census, the emphasis will be on an online response. There still will be paper forms if requested. However, for cost benefit, it's important that everybody, you know, the focus here is that it'll be a digital response. We've noted that, you know, areas, rural areas have a digital divide. We will be sending paper forms. There will still be an option to answer by phone as well. I'm sure you've seen in the news, you know, this is a controversial issue these days. However, the emphasis here that we've been delivering to the public and, you know, to trusted messengers is that this data is confidential. You know, most of this information as well. This upcoming census is going to be using differential privacy. It'll be encrypted. We do not share this information with other agencies, and both Maricris and I abide by Title 13. So this information is private and confidential. We hope you deliver that message as well. So here we are. We're around the awareness and education phase. We've been opening area census offices. We've been hiring up, staffing up, and, you know, you can see kind of the key dates where we're at. And we're here with you now to form and implore you to please form another CCC, a Complete Count Committee, to get that undercount up. And this is from one of our internal GIS tools called Rome. As you, you know, we're focusing, we've been assigned to some of these hard to count, low response areas, and that happens to be, you know, in Los Angeles County, the city of Hawthorne, regionally, South LA. So we've been focusing with nonprofits, CBOs, libraries, city officials, public officials. Here we are to, you know, please address this issue, which we see in the data. This is from 2010. How can all of you help, constituents and public officials alike? We, you know, again, implore you to take this onto your agenda and form a CCC. Any fairs, any events that we can attend in the area, please let us know. We'd like to be a public face, you know, let people know there's jobs coming online, there are federal wages, federal benefits. So we've left some materials. We've left some at the Hawthorne Library out front. Yeah. And please just make people aware. Please refer to the 2020census.gov/jobs is where you can refer, you know, individuals, family, friends, for some of these positions, everything from at the area census offices, which are more administrative in nature, to the enumerators that we'll be hiring. If you need to contact us, you know.
I have a...
And if you have any questions.
I have a... Oh, wow, everybody has questions. Okay. Well, I have a question about a question that could potentially be on the census. Has the issue of having that citizenship question been put to rest? Or is it still pending?
It's still pending. It's still ongoing. So any litigation, we defer to our Public Information Office. But nevertheless, the goal here is an accurate count.
But what is... Where is it at right now? Can you tell us?
It's still in the... We refer to our PIO office, which states that, you know, it's in judicial review. So we don't have comment.
Okay. Excellent.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you for coming and making this presentation. I have a question about the Complete Count Committee. What are... How do you go about forming that? And what would we need to do to make that happen?
Yeah. So, good evening, everyone. So I think the first step really is if the city council could do a form, an actual document that would endorse a complete count committee to help start it, that would be the beginning. And then we Census Bureau officers, we will be happy to assist with any technical information in setting up a complete count committee. We can help train in helping to get committee members into the committee as well.
What is the value of a complete count committee? What do they do that you...
So the Complete Count Committee, the idea is that in the previous census that we've done as well, they were critical in strategizing ideas in doing the campaign to the hard-to-reach and hard-to-count population within the areas because they are... You could form the committee with different members representing different sectors. It could be from the religious sector, school district, somebody from the city as well, and community-based organizations. And they can come together and form that committee and create strategized ideas that would help to do the outreach to those hard-to-count and hard-to-reach population.
So basically, the Complete Count Committee is formed to do outreach and try and reach voter, potential, potential people who have, who would not normally...
Correct.
...turn their information in. So you try to, you try to find ways to get them to respond.
Right. Because if we have those trusted voices within the community, it will be more helpful and that they would be the voice to really tell the community that this is something important and that it's confidential and that, you know, it will benefit the community as well.
To the chair. So let me ask you a question because on 2010, when we formed that committee, you know, the 100% count, we received some type of funds from the Census Bureau, I don't know, in Los Angeles County or the state that gave us money. For example, I did like a carnival, you know, bring people out, you know, and it was a lot of information there, you know, they pay for the equipment, they pay for the materials. So are you having money there that can assist us?
So for the Census Bureau this time around, we don't have the stimulus that they did in the last 2010. So we don't have that kind of like funding right now to assist. But we do have the resources, as I mentioned. We can provide the technical assistance. We can provide training materials for the CCC. We have some of the publications, like one sheets about what the census is all about, why it's important, and all the materials.
Yeah. Because I understand that the Hawthorne School District, for example, is going to contact all these other school districts because we have about five school districts in the city of Hawthorne. So they're going to begin the conversation about to form the committee. So, and that's what I want the city to be, participate on that, and then, you know, and contact all the nonprofits and the churches and even the membership associations to get involved so we can promote and advertise about the census because a lot of people do not understand. Let just me say, like, for example, for the schools, it brings money, you know, for early head start and head start programs, Title I grants, special education, Title IV foster care, childcare and development block grants, and various health programs, Medicare, Medicare. All of that is based on those census numbers. So they send money to the city or to the school district is based on that census count. So if we don't count 100%, imagine that if we count 58% or 60%, so we will not receive the 40% money for these other individual that has not been counted. So that is what is important for us to participate in this committee and to make sure that we count every single person in the city of Hawthorne because, like I said, we also, the city benefits, you know, because of block grant monies, home funds, CDBG. And like you said, it's important because they're going to redistrict all the congresspeople, you know, it's going to be fighting about who's going to represent us. So in that, we will have a voice on that. So it is very important for us to be part of the Census Committee. So I appreciate for you guys coming. Thank you very much. And I'll be in touch because I want to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Clerk, the guidelines for oral communication, sir?
During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies, as a body, shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
So we're gonna try to eliminate all responses, only direction to city manager. Neil Gaffney?
Here.
Thank you. Earthquake preparedness.
Mayor, council members, staff, I've been asked to briefly present a little bit about what's happening within the city to energize the community about what's recently happened in the last few days. I'm wearing this shirt for a particular reason, both for people in the audience as well as people at home who might be live streaming. We all know what happened. Lead article in Sunday's Times. We may have all felt it. What a lot of people in the city probably don't know is we have an emergency management function. I'm the emergency preparedness coordinator, and this is probably the time for people to really pay attention. I suspect the Joltean got their attention the other day. So what I've done is I've made available a number of documents that I have in a way to kind of educate the community about how to prepare. So outside, outside chambers, along with a number of books, I provided the essentials of what's involved in helping prepare for an earthquake. Obviously, food, water are most critical. You need to have other things like eyeglasses if you need them, medical prescriptions if you have them. You need to be prepared with your pets. You need to have some money, small bills. So many of the lists that you see have those items on there. For people who don't know what's on the lists, any of these books can help you out. This one called "Emergency Survival Guide," I've probably got about 90 or 100 copies outside. This book talks about essential actions, what to do in the case of various threats other than perhaps earthquake. Many people don't think of the hazardous materials because we're adjacent to both refining plants. We have pipelines going through the community. We're adjacent to an airport. Lots of threats facing Hawthorne. Earthquake is probably the one most prominent now in people's minds. It talks about things like how to shut off your gas, the key being that that could be the biggest risk in an earthquake. That gas line ruptures, there's serious problems. Things that it reminds you about is to have the right wrench to turn off your little control, 90 degrees from the flow to the stop, and for that matter, even to tie your wrench to that particular gas meter so it's there when the problem occurs. The aspect of essential emergency applies. We're making the assumption in the emergency community, it would be three to seven days before the Red Cross can help in a major earthquake. So people need to be self-sufficient for that period of time. A gallon of water a person a day, obviously meals, which you can buy either in a package form from local stores, emergency stores, or simply cans of items that will last for a while, tuna fish, things of that nature. But you do need your food. Some other things that this book will tell you about will be many numbers. There's probably 20 different numbers here that talk about every type of help and resource available. The beauty of this book is it's also available online. Few other things, emergency preparedness for your pets, a single page, a whole booklet, a booklet in Spanish, all outside. If you need help as a handicapped person, this is the Access and Functional Needs booklet. And for those with children who want to get them engaged, we've got Prepare with Pedro, a coloring book, which is something that helps get, gets the kids involved. Most important thing to remember, at the time of the quake, drop, cover, and hold. And that involves you getting under something safe, generally a table of some kind, something sturdy, so that you're not injured by anything. You don't want to be outside. You don't want to be in the proximity of, you know, glass that might be breaking, things of that nature. So in a nutshell, and very quickly, that's the best I can provide in three or four minutes. But lots of documents outside, and we will be doing more outreach, outreach to the community, and a lot of it will tie in with the emergency alert system that you've all heard about, which is developing very nicely within the South Bay. Later point, I'll be able to apprise the community and the council on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pat Donaldson?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Potem, City Council, Patricia Donaldson, Presidentcy of the Hawthorne Chamber. I want to first, above all, thank everyone for your support, for the flowers, for the phone calls, for my great-grandson. He was mauled by a rottweiler, as you all know, and he has over 100 stitches, most, there's 80 stitches in his legs. And that happened two weeks ago. He just got out of the hospital. He will get the stitches out. He has to be put to sleep to get the stitches out, and that'll happen next week. He's in a wheelchair. So, and the first person to call me was the chief. So thank you so much. Everyone called, but he was the first one. I mean, right after it happened, I was like in shock that he even knew so quickly. But I want to thank everyone for your support and your prayers. Thank you, Arnie, for the flowers. Thank you so much. Okay. So then I want to make mention that we have our golf tournament coming up on September 19th, and I'm going to put these brochures out in the foyer, and it'll be at the Rio Hondo. And I don't really, you know, I don't play golf, but everything in here, it's so much fun just sitting there and watching. But everything's in here to be a sponsor, and I hope that some of the city people, and I know that the police department's putting a group together also to play golf. So hopefully, we'll see you there. There's going to be flat screens that are going to be given away, baskets from Total Wine. So you can just call the chamber and come and, there's going to be lunch served for the golfers and buffet dinner. So, and another thing I would just like to add and piggyback with Neil is I went to the more prepared for the earthquake place that's on 147th and got some booklets that I'm going to put out there also. But I think one of the things that's really important is because Ridgecrest still does not have running water, and there is a 55-gallon tank that you can buy for your house, and that water lasts for five years, and you just change the water every five years, and they give you a little tube to put whatever it is, chemicals in it for it to last because water is really important to have. So hopefully, you can go here and get that tank, but then the backpacks, you can get at Home Depot for like $30 cheaper than this place. But at least the tank is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Langford?
Thank you, council. My name is Joy Langford. I work for the Honorable Assemblywoman Autumn Burke. Before I get started on what I came to speak about, I believe somebody asked about the 2020 Census citizenship question. According to my notes from the legislature, it will not be on the 2020 census. So that's as of July 2nd. So that's the most recent information. But I did not come here for that. I came to promote our back-to-school Health and Wellness Fair. We are having it again this year in Inglewood at Crozier Middle School. It's a great fun event. We have free health screenings for children, children's activities. Each kid gets a free lunch of chicken nuggets from McDonald's. It's just fun, as well as each child gets a backpack to go back to school with full of books and books and school supplies per each child that's in attendance. So I wanted to let you guys know that it's on August 3rd. It's going to be from 10:30 to 3:00 PM, again, at Crozier Middle School. I've placed flyers at the information desk as well as back out here on the counter. And if you have any questions, feel free to get in touch with our office. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, and please send our regards to the Assemblywoman. Gordon Michael Migo?
Hello, everyone. Gordon Michael Migo, native and resident of Hawthorne since October 8th, 1952. Hope everyone had a safe and enjoyable Fourth of July weekend. And I see all the faces, familiar faces here, so that must be the case. As has been already spoken of, on Thursday, July the 4th, magnitude 6.4 earthquake occurred, and on Friday, July the 5th, magnitude 7.1 earthquake occurred north of Los Angeles in the Ridgecrest area, where damage to buildings happened, but fortunately without any loss of life. The second earthquake was felt in the South Bay area where light to moderate shaking of buildings occurred, but also without any injuries happening to people. It has been about 25 years since the North Ridge event, which was a major tempest that caused, you know, death and destruction. The United States Geological Survey, or USGS, said that the latest earthquakes must serve as a warning to the people in the county of Los Angeles, which is long overdue for a major event. It should remind people to have food, water, and other basic necessities of life that will last for many weeks if there are delivery problems. And Neil Gaffney spoke to this in much more, greater extent, and he's kind of like you might say, the go-to man in regards to such matters. The number of hospitals in the LA region will be a critical element for people who are really badly injured during moderate or severe earthquakes. The Hospital Association of Southern California has said a opening of a new hospital in the city of Hawthorne would fill a large void in the regional network of hospitals. Some people claim that they support Hawthorne for the betterment of our community. As the saying goes, actions speak louder than words. They need to step up to the plate and join in a public-private partnership for said hospital with a full array of services for the community and the region. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to address the city council, please line up. Amy Shepherd?
Thank you and good evening. Thank you to Mr. Migo for bringing up the hospital. I'm actually here to maybe clarify some of the things I brought up at the June 25th meeting. I was watching the June 11th meeting, and I saw that Mayor Vargas had a one-acre parcel he was discussing for a homeless shelter dedicated to veterans. He specifically referenced in that conversation the RFK Hospital and Mr. Bill Hassan. So I thought I would come here and say that, you know, we are very open to all kinds of projects. I've explored at length a hospital, but one of the things that we were really focused on and that I personally have worked on is a homeless transitional center with wraparound services for the veterans in the existing RFK building with some additional low income and senior housing for veterans on that parcel, same eight acres. So what we're asking is for the help of the city council, ultimately, you know, we've taken this project as far as we can. We've worked with the groups that have been brought to us, and there's just no funding there. So what we asked in June 25th, and I know the city manager was on vacation, is that we get a directive, you know, from the city council to join and do exactly precisely what Mr. Migo is asking, some sort of public-private working together, you know, I won't say partnership because we're, you know, it's not an equal partnership, but your help and your support in getting a project like that going. The parcel that you guys referenced in Cordari and Rosecrans is only one acre. You wouldn't really have a lot of room there to do any wraparound services, but at the RFK site, we do have eight acres. So we could do urgent care, we could do mental and medical health facilities, we could do vocational job training, and those are all things that Mr. Hassan is very interested in, and I've been helping him for the last four and a half years try and get it done. That's why he hired me. He knew I had a passion. I signed Mr. Migo's oath in 2015, so I wanted to clarify. And then additionally, I know there were some colorful comments after I left. I apologize, my son was tired and cranky. So thankfully, you didn't get to hear those comments. But in regards to the secret meeting that was... in regards to the secret meeting that was mentioned, the Hassan Foundation did invite the Ministerial Association to come out for a breakfast meeting, we did discuss housing, it wasn't a clandestine or secret meeting, it was not a photo opportunity for politicians, it was just a chance for us to meet the pastors and kind of see what their needs were, and we're happy to report that we're going to be doing a lot of events with the local churches and our foundation, and hopefully coming together and getting something going at the hospital site. So we look forward to that, we invite you guys to, you know, issue a directive and come on board and help us with that. And if you have any questions, I'll leave my phone number one more time, I didn't get a call at all in the last few weeks from anybody, but it's three-one-zero-six-eight-six-four-five-four-four. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here, and I'm going to ask you to go back to Mr. Bill Hassan, and I'm going to ask you, I'm going to set aside even a presentation time, so he can self can come up here, not through a surrogate, we like for him to come up and present any previous plans that he's presented, and we like to go through historical chronology of what's happened there. So we would like to hear from him and not a surrogate, so we're open to hearing about that. Commissioner Darlene Love?
Yes.
You're going to hear from me, not from Mr. Hassan.
Oh, okay, he does speak, right? We'd like to hear from him.
He does, but he hires someone to do that for him, and I'm that person.
Okay, so you're paid, you're paid by him? Okay, you're paid by him, okay, thank you.
No, he hasn't paid me a red cent this year, I'm the mayor, actually, I volunteer for the foundation, just like I volunteered for the Bus Law.
Commissioner, Commissioner Darlene Love?
But he wants to keep pressing me personally against the Brown Act violation.
Commissioner Darlene Love, please go ahead.
My name is Darlene Love. First of all, I go to the drugstore here, now that I've gotten old, it seems like every other week I gotta go get some rubs or some pills or something, but they only have one cart there. I was just having a fit, and finally, I guess one of the managers they have there, he went out and got it, came in, he said, "We only have one, they steal them, we've ordered twenty," and then when I got it, one of the ladies, "How did you happen to get a cart? They don't have carts here." And I said, "I know, I've come here every other week for something, and I think it's a shame, that's a nice drugstore, they get very good business, but they should have more carts than one there." So one of the ladies know me, and she said, "Miss Love, they do order them, but they take them." I said, "Well, you can fix something out there where the carts can't get off your lot." And she says, "Oh, well, maybe we should mention that to the manager, because it's such a shame that you in a drugstore, you don't buy more pills or rub or something, and you have to wait and wait and wait to get that one cart, that's pitiful, and I think we deserve more than that over here." And I have another thing, thank you for trimming our trees, they do look nice, you're a wonderful man, I don't know what we would do without you, thank you so much. And yesterday, I was at the President's Council, I would like to see more of you, or you that head seats to come. That's very, very good. I'll be gone when our president presents this to our chief, I'll be down in Texas, I'm going to Dallas, I'm going home. And I want more to see more of you since I'm the vice chair. At the President's Council, they do a lot of things for this city, and when you hear some of the things that they are doing, what they're going to do, please come, we shouldn't have to beg you people that head these organizations. When Carter was here, you couldn't get in there, now it's, the food has to be bought, maybe there's certain few, so please come. When I come back from Texas, you'll hear more of me about what is going on with the President's Council, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, anybody else wishing to address the City Council?
Basically, I just want to, I live in the Parkside Village area, my name's Ruby Coens, I just wanted to say another thank you, because I noticed like the park has, the trees been trimmed and so forth, so I believe that's north over there, we want to thank you, and also the police chief, we've noticed that as well, we see cops around and things like that, and we feel safer as well. I just want to say a thank you to all you guys, and I appreciate the attention that Holly Park and the Parkside residents are receiving at the very end of Hawthorne, so thank you very much, and you're doing an excellent job, keep it up, thank you.
You are, you are our eyes and ears, so just make sure you guys keep telling us what's going on over there, okay?
Got it.
Go ahead.
Chris Palmer, I just want to follow up on the census presentation, there is funding available, it's over a hundred million dollars, and we're a hard-to-count population, so we're at the top of the line to receive that, so I'll do the research to investigate how we get it.
And let me know if you, you know, I write grants, so we can, we can write together, okay?
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Okay, the oral communication is now adjourned. Mr. Clerk, your consent calendar, sir, so we can move ahead?
Mr. Mayor, I have three items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item six, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item seven, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item nine, resolution number eight-one-one-five, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, supporting the supplemental of an application by the Los Angeles Neighborhood Land Trust for statewide park program grant funds.
I move? Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, there aren't any public hearings today, and there aren't any ordinances today, we do have a consent calendar for the city manager, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, I have three items on my consent calendar for your approval tonight.
I move?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item number seventeen, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, I just have one item.
Okay, and everybody got a chance to read the details?
Yes.
Okay. I move?
Next.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, now it's time for elected officials' reports and recommendations, Mr. City Treasurer, Mr. David Patterson?
Might be a record, quickly, I've been called on. I just want to thank the community for coming out, participating in the process, you know, definitely can be anywhere, you can be anywhere, but this is where you find out the decisions that are made on your behalf, so definitely appreciate you guys' participation, and that's all I have, thanks.
Mr. City Clerk, Paul Jimenez?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank the audience as well for coming out here tonight, I hope a lot of neighbors are also following us online, we sent a message to over eight-thousand residents via Nextdoor to inform them about tonight's meeting and how to access future meetings and our agendas. To the directors, mayor, council members, this is a reminder to send me information that you want our community to know about, again, we have over eight-thousand people on Nextdoor, so it's, so you're all doing some great things for our city, and it will benefit, that will benefit the residents of Hawthorne, so we want to make sure that they learn about these things that everyone's doing, and I'm looking at the directors as well. If there are any groups who would like to know about the new voting process, please contact me at three-one-zero-three-four-nine-two-nine-one-eight, so our office can connect you with a representative that can provide you a group presentation. For example, we're currently working with St. Joseph's Church to have a voting information meeting after a few of their masses in early September, so we could do the same for your groups. I want to thank council member Valentine and Mayor Vargas and all our neighbors for attending the new voting process meeting at Memorial Center on June twenty, on June eighteenth. Ms. Valentine and Mayor Vargas, I appreciate that you mentioned the event at the last council meeting, it was great to learn that over fifty neighbors attended the meeting, and I received a lot of great information, great feedback from our neighbors and also from the presenters themselves. Lastly, I hope everyone's enjoying their summer, if you have children, make sure to take them to the summer park programs at your local Hawthorne park, they take place Tuesday through Saturdays from nine A.M. to four P.M. until August seventeenth. I've taken my son a bunch of times already, and he loves them, so thank you for doing those.
Thank you so much, Mr. City Clerk, Councilmember Taya.
First, I guess I want to say something about the acre of land that we got out there. Every time that we talk about vets, sometimes people that are talking about vets don't really know much about vets, and they don't really know what the vets need and how you present that, the needs that they have. And what I was, when, when that acre came up, I didn't want to complicate it, I wanted to make it simple, plus it's kind of a low-hanging fruit, it's something that's easy to do, that's doable, that, and, and, and I just wanted to create an idea that I had, was just something that works for housing, not transitional, not homeless, not any of that, but simply affordable housing for veterans. And if that is successful, then you could take that project to other cities and create the same, duplicate something like that, then you're really doing something for the veterans. You know, if you're able to pull that off, where you do something in Hawthorne, and it really functions and it works on a smaller scale, you can duplicate that in a lot of different cities, and then you're really going to do something to help the veteran housing situation, because if all you do is talk about transitional, this and that, and homeless, it's not going to fly, it's not going to go anywhere. Those are big, big jobs that only the government can actually do, but in, in a project like that, it would be, makes sense to create, and I would, I would easily give up on a couple of units if you made a nice garden and a nice peaceful environment where, where, you know, that would go a lot farther, but anyway, that, that was the difference there. Then the other thing, I run a nonprofit, Alex runs a nonprofit, we were selling fireworks this year, the nonprofits got a little roughed up this year, and, and they got roughed up because there were some changes at the last second, and, you know, and they scared the hell out of everybody, well, you're going to close you down, and, you know, there was kind of an antagonistic relationship this year with the city. I didn't experience that, but a lot of other people did. And I took part for many, many years with a, with a group called Combined Federal Campaign. Combined Federal Campaign is organized by the federal government that allows charitable organizations to solicit donations from federal employees, and I spent a lot of time with rooms full of nonprofits, and they are the best people in the world. They are doing work that nobody else will do, a lot of them are doing it volunteer, they're taking care of kids, they're taking care of the elderly, they're taking care of the vets, they're taking care of the pets, and, and, you know, I think that, you know, we recognize around here, everybody, you know, for anything, and I don't mean anything, I mean important recognitions, but I think that you gotta stop a little bit and recognize the work that nonprofits do, okay? Not just because I'm doing it, I've been doing it for seventeen years, and I'll tell you the truth, it's the best thing that I've ever done in my life. So from, 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 from a standpoint, I'd like, and I'll tell you, and I'll be a little bit more specific about what happened, if there's any changes with the code, if there's any changes with the, with what's required in order to be able to open up your, your business, please get that word out early, so you don't do it the day of, because there was a lot of people scrambling the day of. So I'd like to see whatever changes, whatever they wanted to do this year that they didn't do it, you know, make sure that you talk, talk that over, and, and give the nonprofits a helping hand, not a, not an adversarial relationship, so work on that. This hospital thing, you know, that requires a lot of vision, a lot of passion, and a lot of ingenuity, and a lot, you know, I don't know what the council can do that the owner cannot do. You know, if the owner puts together a good package, and if he can't sell it to somebody that will, because it's a great idea, but whether the city council is able to really help, you know, that's got to come from the owner and the passion of the owner and somebody with a little imagination. It's, it sounds great, but it requires somebody that knows what they're doing, has a passion, the money, and, and willing to do that, and the knowledge. Everybody wants to talk about vets, 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 and you, you'd be surprised how easily they miss the point. And, and then another thing that we were talking about here, just two seconds more, I, I requested, when I first came on the council, that we put together a notification process to include more people, you know, to, when, when there's a, and, and that's gone nowhere, and I'd like to know where that's at, and I'd like to see something happen on that, because...
Can you specify?
Well, we, in a conversation while I was on the planning commission, we were talking about the notification process.
Radius.
Oh, the radius, I, I don't know, I think that we, we wanted to include more, a larger radius, we wanted to include the tenants, make sure that the tenants were notified, we wanted to include that it might be bilingual in Spanish, but none of that has really happened yet. And, you know, if you want to talk about the VA, the VA, there's a saying among vets that says, "Apply, deny, and wait till you die," you know? That's, that's something that, that, that a lot of veterans say about the VA, that it's an adversarial relationship, apply, deny, wait till you die. And sometimes, when you give a directive here, it dies unless you push it, and I'd like to know what, what happened with that, as well as the architectural board and where that, all of that stuff is going. That's enough for me. Okay?
All right, thank you, Councilmember Hadarwad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to thank the public for coming out, hope you had a wonderful Fourth of July weekend, and that's my end.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Alex Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again, thank you for being here tonight, so it's after Fourth of July, some of us are tired, very tired, you know, after the, after the Fourth of July sale. Let me start to say that the Fourth of July sale, actually, you know, when you guys think about it, we put up almost eight days of working tirelessly, ten to ten P.M., and the profit is not even the greatest thing that we can have. Like, if, if we came up with thirty percent of the profit, that would be a miracle. And, and let me say that the fireworks sales, the profit does not go to salaries to none of us, it goes to the people, it goes to the community, it goes to the children, it goes to the families. Because when, for example, my preschool over there at the castle, when I have children, like when I have ninety children, do you know how much money that the state of California, the Department of Education gives me per child per day? Twenty-eight dollars. They educate the children, twenty-eight dollar per day, per child, per people, okay? So it doesn't give me a lot of room to maneuver when I have to pay teachers benefits, and then I have to try to find classroom supplies, that is what the fireworks sometime goes to, classroom supplies, classroom repairs, painting. And even for the low-income building that the Monita Garden owns, we don't gather a lot of rents there, because it's low income, so people for one bedroom, they only pay a thousand dollars, three-bedroom, eleven hundred dollars. So we do a lot of repairs, so right now, for example, because of the earthquake, a pipe just busts on Sunday, right there on, on the garage, so it's going to cost thousands of dollars to fix it. So I write grants to bring money to the city, and believe it or not, for these past twenty years, I have brought maybe more than fifty million dollars into the city in grants, that nobody knows about it. So some of you that goes on social media and accuses of getting the money for our salary, you're completely wrong, because the money, the profit, it doesn't even pay one month's salary for my teacher. So at least you could tell the truth out there. All right, so on the, I would like maybe a support from my council members, and maybe a directive to city manager and to Vaughn Norris, that on September twenty-first, the Lions Club, the Hawthorne Lions Club, and the L-4, there's a whole Lions Club district that... and the L-four, there's a whole Lions Club district that's from present LA County for L-three, they're going to have an event at Memorial Center, specifically at the Singer Center. This event is open to the public. They're going to do eye exam and provide glasses the same day. So, the event's going to be from nine to three PM on September twenty-seventh, twenty-first. It's a Saturday and this is going to benefit our community. So, children, seniors, families, adults. So, if you need glasses, they're going to do examination right there and then they'll try to give you the glasses right there. If they do not have that glasses, they're going to mail it to you for free later on, okay? So, I would love to see us supporting the cause, right? I know, you know, even the fees, to tell you the truth, is about three hundred dollars. So, if you don't support, I'll pay it. But basically, that's what the cost. But I would love for us to put as a, as a city-sponsored event for September twenty-first at the Singer Center. That's going to have the Lions, basically it's Lion International and the Hawthorne Institute of Lions doing this together, okay? Let me say something. Look, my, my vision, I would love to see Robert F. Kennedy develop. So, I have told Bill Hassan in his face, face to face, that we would love to see him come and bring us a project that we will debate it here, we will discuss it. And if it's a project that needs our help with the federal government, with the state, we are willing to help him. Even I'm willing to help him write grants to the federal government, to the state, to try to bring money into the city. Okay, because one time I wrote a grant that was to bring almost five, it was actually, it was like thirty million dollar into Hawthorne. But because my nonprofit didn't have enough money in the bank, because you would have to show that you have at least one-fourth of that money to make sure you'll survive for the three months, they didn't give me that grant. So, and I know Bill Hassan have a lot of money. So, if he wants to do a project, I can tell him exactly what he can do with Robert F. Kennedy. And I'm willing to put myself online to help him. But until he comes and brings us a project that we could agree upon, that is going to benefit the people of Hawthorne, we are not going to just chit-chat back and forth because we need to see a plan. We need to see a project. I told him, you don't need to pay architects. You can pay just a graphic designer to do that. Just to create a little model of a village, what he wants to do there. So, then we'll be able to, to move forward. But until then, don't play this game with us, please. Again, the census, I would love to see the city get involved because, like I said, it's a lot of money that we would, we have lost for these ten, for these ten years. Millions of dollars who have come to Hawthorne for our childrens, for our families, for, you know, for the schools, for the city, that we have not got because we were only fifty-eight percent count. And, and we need to do a better job on that. So, I want your help to make sure that we do that. And I know the Ms. Love mentioned about the Hawthorne President's Council. Next meeting, we will present the check to the Chief of Police for the K-nine unit because this time it was a record fundraising and I'm not going to tell you the number until, so you can come back on the twenty-third to see that check for the, for the chief. Also, the, I know Ms. Valentine's going to talk about the National Night Out, right? Because the lady came to the Hawthorne President's Council, asked for support, so I'll let you do that. Again, you know, so we're here to serve the people and to solve problems, to solve issues. So, the other thing that I did, I signed an agreement with Mr. Shafar, the Neighborhood Smart Parking Solution. We're going to start the pilot project at the Hawthorne Muslaj Parking Lot because Hawthorne Parking Lot is empty almost twenty-four-seven because we don't open all the time. So, we're going to, we're going to use two shifts, people can park during the day and people can park during the nighttime. So, and they're going to pay two dollars to park. So, we're going to see if that project works. We already in the process of sending a letter to the churches to introduce them to the concept of the smart parking and allow people to park overnight for a fee and the church will make money. So, that's the way we're going to try to solve the park, the parking problem in Hawthorne. And there is some other ideas out there and I wanted people to bring it on because I know parking is an issue that people continuing to, to tell us, parking, park is a problem. Okay, I see in my neighborhood and everywhere that I go. So, so we're trying to create solution. And this is what we got elected for, is to address your issue, to make sure that you are taking, we are taking care of you, right? We can do our best. We don't do miracles. But the staff has been doing a wonderful job out there. You know, you can see all this construction on our streets. We're trying to, to do something with low-income housing because that will help our arena number down the road. So, we're doing our part. And you guys out there, you're doing your parts. Come in here and tell us what's happening out there. And again, you know, our police department, Public Works, Fire, you know, Engineering, Code Enforcement, Housing, everybody's doing their best.
You have thirty seconds.
I appreciate it and good night.
I said it with love.
I love you too, Paul.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Thank you. Yeah, so as Councilman Montero was stating, some of us are working on night, having National Night Out again. We had it a few years ago and it was very successful and it was very well-received by the communities. So, we're going to try it again. Unfortunately, we didn't have a lot of time. It was sort of a last-minute thought, but we decided to do it anyway and surprisingly, many communities have come out to our meetings. We've had two meetings so far. Surprisingly, it's coming together. We plan to hold it on the evening of August sixth from six to nine PM. It will be at the Memorial Center in the park. This is something cities all over the country celebrate on the same night. So, August sixth is the night they celebrate, the first Tuesday in the month. And the idea is to bring the communities and the police department together in unity to, to, to show the, the unity and cooperation between those two entities. It's a symbolic gesture that residents are taking back their cities from the negative elements in the city and partnering with the police department. So, it's a fun night. The police department is going to be our partner in doing that. We've got a DJ so far. We've got a commitment from some sponsors for light refreshments. And our next meeting is July fifteenth at nine AM at the Betty Ainsworth Center. I invite the communities to come. We've, we have several communities participating. I'd like to see all of the Hawthorne communities participating. And I think it's going to be a really nice event, even though we brought it together at the last minute and it's kind of a scramble. But that's kind of fun too. It's the whole process. Everybody's kind of excited about it now and because we can see it's coming together. So, I invite you all to come to our planning meetings. And if you cannot do that, bring your, bring your communities with you on August sixth. Bring your children. We're going to try to have games and refresh, games for the children and should be a fun night. So, see you all on August sixth, if not before. Thank you.
Okay, that's it? All right. Thank you. So, the meetings come to an end. We've done an hour's worth of meetings. So, thank you all for being here. I hope you guys all had a great Fourth of July. Of course, making sure that we've had our police enforcing the illegal fireworks bans in force. We've confiscated truckloads of fireworks and there may have been some penalties that were issued citations. So, I commend our police force. Chief Yeshi, thank you so much. And if you go up in a helicopter on Fourth of July and say, and feel that the City of Hawthorne, for some reason or other, there's, we're an anomaly. We're not. Actually, there's areas that are even more impacted. And I'm not talking to the east side. I'm talking to the west. These little beach cities with these surfer guys over there. I mean, they're all having fun out there with their bottle rockets and all their, like, different things that they have. So, it's, we're not the only ones that this is impacted and you're correct. We want to make sure that we do what we can to minimize the illegal fireworks, the ones that are causing the noise and the damage to homes when there is a fire that occurs to them. So, we, there's still, we need to find a solution. I think we still need to find a solution and that's not something that we've taken off the table. So, we just want to let you know that, okay? I guess with the issue with the RFK Building, the, it's something that, it seems like, I just, I'm just afraid that there might be people out there trying to blur what actually has happened over the many years with this building. It was a hospital. It went out of business. It wasn't doing too good of a business and it went out and it went out of business. That's what happens with a lot of hospitals. There's a lot of dynamics for that. And we have Mr. Gordon Michael Miegel, who's always been advocating for a hospital. And of course, those ideas have been repeatedly presented to the owner of the Hawthorne Mall, Mr. Bill Hassan. And there've been many other times where my council colleague, Mayor Proton Valentine and Kyle Orlemans have presented ideas to him, bringing people from the federal government that want to meet. And there hasn't been an interest. So, this, I just feel that there's just a bit of disinformation, making it seem like we're not cooperative and we don't want, on the contrary, there has been more of an effort from our council members than you might imagine. You just, we just, we're not publicizing it. What we want to report is good news. We don't want to report every single time the owner of the RFK Building, Mr. Bill Hassan, is not interested in selling or is not interested in working on something. So, one thing I want to clarify, with all respect to, you know, all those people out there that are interested in something happening there and feel that we're not, no, on the contrary, guys. In about two thousand eight, two thousand seven, maybe even two thousand nine, Mr. Bill Hassan applied to have that area rezoned, to build between seventeen and nineteen units per acre of houses, homes, residential. He applied for that. He went through the whole motions. He applied and he did all these different things out there to be able to build. Yet, he has not moved a single bit. He has permission to do what he originally asked for. So, I think the question is, why has he not done anything? Not that the city hasn't cooperated and been receptive. That's disinformation. That's just blurring what's going on. Why hasn't he built what he applied for about ten years ago? I was opposed to it. Many of you from like the past remember when I was up here with Francis Stiglich? We opposed for it, okay? Okay, we need some silence over there in the audience. I mean, it's fine. You have your turn. You can come back next week and repeat the whole thing, but. So, the question becomes, why hasn't Mr. Bill Hassan lifted a finger and done something? So, that's really, and so the invitation is opened for him to come personally so we could address him. I think he's the man we want to talk to, not a surrogate. But if he insists on sending somebody, that's up to him. But I would rather hear from him, to see the man in the flesh himself. And just like Councilmember Montero says, of course, even up to this point, even though there's been a bit of like disappointment in the whole thing, we're still willing to hear what he, a plan, if he has one, on how to address these things. Of course, absolutely. We need to help as many people as possible. So, that invitation is open and our willingness to work with the gentleman is still there. So, hopefully, he produces something that's concrete and that we could consider. That's simply where we're at and just where I want to leave it. But thank you all for being here. Thank you all for coming and staying us with this lengthy meeting of an hour long, all right? This meeting is now adjourned.